This is the regular scheduled planning commission meeting. Wednesday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Present are Severn Johnson, Commissioner Severn Johnson, Commissioner Simon Kirschman, Commissioner John Stout and myself, Wayne Francine. Lori is excused tonight with a family obligation. I anticipate Larry coming, so we'll go from there. Severn, would you offer invocation? And John, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Anyone like to join this pledge?
Wait a minute, just invitation, invocation first.
Our God, gracious, eternal heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to meet together as someone in the whole city of the commission. Blessed are our deliberations this night that we may have my spirit to guide us to help our city to grow and meet the development goals that we have for it. And these things we pray for in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance implied of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Is there anyone interested in any public comment? I don't see any, so we will close the public comment period. Moving to the next item on the agenda, number five, approval of August twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four Planning Commission minutes. I take a motion to, on that matter.
I move that we approve the minutes for August twenty-first.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a final plat, actually amended final plat approval for, amended plat for Phase B on the Bellevue subdivision. I think we can still go ahead with that even though Bellevue is not present here or zoomed in. But we'll have a discussion and review of that. I've sent each of you some information that we have. And I would like to summarize some of that. Just thinking through the process here. I know Ted's got another obligation tonight. Ted, maybe I ask you to go ahead and start and you can get your part through and answer any questions that we might have, then we can move on to the other things in your absence. Give a little bit of background too, from your perspective.
As Wayne is in this, but I'll give the background. So the Bellevue subdivisions is Carol Bell, Steve McClary, those guys. And Phase B is the second part of the project you're probably familiar with. Part of that, they got to put in a little bit of a road. It's going to be a cul-de-sac road. And over the years where this road is going, the developer has allowed fill material to be dumped in this area, a significant amount of fill. From what I understand, initially there was twelve feet of fill that was dumped in this area. The fill to speak of is somewhat undocumented. In other words, they weren't doing any testing. They say there was observation going on and compaction of the material. They wrote a letter to that fact, the geotech engineer, Bill Turner. And it was actually, the onsite observation was done by Nate Pack here in the town. And I did talk to Nate when we were kind of reviewing the subdivision. So they put twelve feet of fill in. CMT, who's the geotech that observed it, didn't have any testing reports, but they wrote a letter saying the material's good, we watched it go in, it was compacted and etc. So we have nothing really more to rely on than that letter. But it is stamped by a professional engineer with his license stamp on it. So that was the initial twelve feet of fill. I don't, that's been in there for a little while, I don't know how long.
Who was, Nate stamped it?
No, Bill Turner.
Nate works for Bill.
Nate works for.
CMT.
Oh, he works for CMT.
Yeah, Nate Pack works for CMT. He was the onsite observer. Bill was the lead geotech and he's the one that wrote the letter and stamped it saying they observed it. Nate was the actual observer. Yeah, yeah, he wasn't mentioned, you know, when I talked to Nate about it, he said, yeah, I was the guy down there watching it. And just, he, I mean, his opinion, obviously we haven't seen it. He felt okay with what they did on the initial twelve feet. So that was about twelve feet of fill that was put in this, in this area. Subsequent to that, there was another eight feet of fill that was then dumped on top of that twelve feet of fill. That was undocumented and not observed by the geotech or the owner nor us, anybody. It was just dumped on the site. So when they, and this was back just prior to me joining the city, they talked about, you know, putting a road on top of that fill material. And their engineer wrote a letter. So we responded back and basically said, you have to test, you have to come up with a plan to test the material and submit to us the testing method you're going to use and then documentation that the fill is sufficient for a road. They went out and did the tests without telling us on that eight. So they didn't, they didn't give us, we'd asked them to tell us what their plan was or what their testing method was and they didn't, they didn't notify us of any testing. They just went out and did it. They dug three pits, three or four, three or four pits, down eight feet through that eight feet of fill that was undocumented and not observed and ran gradations and different kind of soil tests on it. And then their engineer, again, Bill Turner, wrote a letter saying, here's what, based on the results of this, of what we've tested, this is what we believe would support a road if they follow this method, which was in effect, take out two feet of material, compact that layer of dirt and then just build back up the road on that two feet of material. So I went through that letter that Bill put together and I looked at their test pits and look at materials. And in that material, there was some what we call deleterious material or tree roots, stumps, that was down about two feet, I believe it was right at two feet. Is where in one of their test pits, they had shown some of that material. So I responded back to that letter and said, here's what we would propose you could do is dig down three feet so we can make sure we get below that material that was identified in the test pits that was deleterious. Then we'll look at that material once you dig down three feet. If that material seems to be okay, then you can go ahead and compact it. Once you get it compacted, then we'll do what we call a roll test where they take a heavy piece of equipment. I just did one today, actually, for South Lofer. They take a really heavy piece of equipment and they drive back and forth on it once they've got it compacted and I go out there and watch it. And if there's, if there's any pumping, what they call pumping, it's in other words, their tires kind of sink in the dirt, then we make them take out that dirt and they have to bring back in good structural material in the locations where we see it pumping. Example, this one, we did Bear Hollow, did the same thing. When they finished Bear Hollow, I pumped it, walked with, filled with dirt, found three locations on that road that were soft, so they dug them up, put good material back in, compacted it and then built from there. Then I went and checked it and then they built from there. Today, we did another roll test on South Lofer and they actually did a good job. There was, we didn't find any pumping on that one. So they're now going to start building their road section up. But, so that's what we recommend, dig down three feet, compact it, we'll do a roll test. And if it looks like we're on good solid material, then put down a layer of geotextile fabric, which is kind of builds in a structural bridge between the new material and the old material. Put down some geotextile fabric and then from there, build back up your road section with import material. You have good import, compact it and then road basin asphalt. If we go down three feet and we find any pumping or more deleterious material, then you have to keep taking it out until we're satisfied that you are on good material. That was kind of the response to that, that we wrote. And then we actually asked them to include that as notes on their plat. That's what they would do as their process. So they basically took my letter of what I suggested they could do that would work as a satisfactory method, added those notes to their plat. So that's kind of where the plat is now, is including those notes with those recommendations.
Talk about that, one additional year.
Oh, yeah, and we also asked them to give us one additional year of warranty on the road. So normally a contractor developer, when they build any infrastructure that the city is going to own, roads, water, sewer, whatever, we, they have to put a, they have to give us a year warranty on it. And we hold on to the bond for a year, in case something goes wrong, then we can fix it. On this one, we asked for an additional year warranty. So in addition to the one year that we require, they're going to give us another year. So we'll have two years of warranty on the road after they build it.
That'll just be for the road. It's not all the rest of the subdivision that would be worked on just.
Yeah, and that's the only area we, we looked at when we wrote back that recommendation letter because there's fill material that goes out into kind of what I'd call the private lots, which, you know, that's up to whoever buys those lots and the developer to deal with, not really our, because we're not going to have to deal with that. But we were mostly focused on in the right way.
They accepted this?
Yeah, they put it on the plat and submitted that as a final plat with those notes.
Ted, I've got a question for you. When you were with Jones and DeMille, where you came over to the city, you were city, you are, were city engineers. There was, this situation came up back then and you addressed a couple of letters to the city and your recommendation was different at that time than it is now. Can you, can you help me better understand why that, what that difference is and why you're looking at it differently now than you were then?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, when we said essentially that we don't know, it's undocumented fill, we don't know what's there and take it out. Yeah, so I think primarily at that time, we hadn't done any testing and hadn't had a chance to review any test results when we wrote those letters. We were just going by the letter that Bill wrote about them observing that initial twelve feet. And then, then they added the eight feet, they've done the testing of the material in there. And so with the test results, looking at that and meeting onsite with them, I think this updated recommendation to them was kind of based on that. It was getting more information, I guess, is the short way to put it, just getting more information, having seen the site. It's, it's almost, just to clarify, it's almost exactly what we're doing on West Lofer. They're digging down four feet and I don't know if you guys know that West Lofer, we're talking about that short piece of road that we're finishing right now. Same thing there, that was a bunch of fill material that was brought in, in this case by the city and to cover up the water, sewer line that was put in. It was, it was undocumented and not tested material. So we did then have, CMT actually went out and tested that one too, did some blow tests on that one, which turned out interesting. But we're doing kind of the same thing on this road. So having a little more background too, with having done West Lofer, it's pretty much the same approach. On West Lofer, they're digging down four feet, they're putting in the geotextile and then we're going to do a roll test where we can because the difference is West Lofer is there's utilities that are down at four feet. So if we go any deeper than that, we're going to have to suspend all the utilities, which would just be astronomically expensive and a big risk. So in this case, we could, we could only go down four feet. So we're going down four feet, proof rolling it all, checking it, putting in the geotextile fabric, then building the road back up from there. Kind of almost the same, having kind of that experience and then also on Bear Hollow, kind of the same approach we took on Bear Hollow. And it seems to be, having, you know, had a little more experience in the area now too, I think it's something similar to what we're doing with other roads. Once again, it's not a pass saying they only can go three feet and that's all. And then they build back up the road, it's go down three feet, we'll do a roll test. And if it looks good, we'll let you put down the fabric and build up. If it doesn't, then you're going to keep taking out material until we're satisfied we're on good material.
So the, the material you're going to take out of the three feet and put in the geotextile, can it go back in if it passes the sieve tests that they talked about?
If it meets the gradation requirements, yeah. So there is a spec for, it's called common fill. And if they can meet the spec for common fill, which is an ASHTO standard, then they can put it back in. It will likely require, could require some screening just until they take it out. The material, I don't know what it looks like. Like we took the stuff out over on just West Lofer and we were thinking that was going to be kind of bad stuff. It turned out it's not bad stuff and they're going to be able to reuse that with some screening. So it's kind of the same thing here.
After, you're confident they dug several pits, I read it somewhere.
Yeah, it was three or four, I can't remember how many they dug.
Did they, the eight feet down to the initial twelve, based on what they found? There's no deleterious material in there that.
No, not, not completely confident. And that's kind of why the approach of dig three feet, we'll see what we find.
Imagine like a tree stump and ten years down the road, it rose and you have this.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it could be down there, I don't, in the eight feet, the four, so the initial twelve feet is still a little bit of, I mean, they observed that and they, they signed off on it. Now, we didn't get to see it. But they said they watched it go in, it was good material and they compacted. Then the last eight feet is kind of the, what was not observed, the gray area. Based on the four, three or four test pits they did, it was only in one test pit that there was a, some, and it wasn't even, it was very kind of minor stuff, so. But once again, I don't know, yeah, it's one of those things where, you know, down the road.
It seems like we have a few trees in there, they passed today, then they compose and that's that.
Yeah.
Is the city satisfied then with the initial cut and fill? Or is, we had documentation on that? It seemed like, when I read CMT's letter, it said that we, that it had been done, but there was no, they didn't say that we have documentation.
Of the initial twelve feet?
Initial cut was, was that material taken out, the original land was looked at, approved at that point and build up. How did that process happen?
Only from, yeah, only from what we know from the letter that CMT wrote, right? What Bill wrote, saying they were satisfied with that initial twelve feet. We didn't see it and I wasn't, that was prior to my time at the city. But from what I understand, the city didn't see it go in other than, like I said, Bill Turner wrote the letter, or CMT, I should say, wrote the letter and signed saying they washed it.
Nate was the observer.
Nate was the observer and I talked to Nate.
And did Nate offer any type of notes or anything on that?
We've asked him for any of that that they have and it hasn't been provided. So we assume that they don't have any other documentation.
Thing, I mean, that's what those guys do, that's document everything they do to cover their tail.
Well, and some of those, I've worked with these guys and others, a lot of times. Actually, every time when I'm going to bring them on a project, they'll send me a proposal saying we're going to do A, B and C. But there's all kinds of disclaimers in there saying, hey, this, this, this and that, we're not liable at all. And so I'd be interested to see their contract, whatever contract they've got between themselves and the bells, to see how, how far they're sticking their neck out. Sometimes they're not that far.
I think we can assume they don't have a contract because we've asked them several times for any documentation, time sheets, anything to show that they've done what they're saying they've done. And the only thing we have is these stamped engineers' letters indicate that it's in writing some of what they've done. But they, I know in one letter, they say, we visited the site several times and that's, that's as much as we get. We don't know how many times, several times is. And anything to document testing or time onsite, they haven't provided that to us.
Now, the, two, two counts, one, I'm going to, I would assume, and I don't know, that they weren't doing compaction testing tests because this material is coming from different locations, from what I understand. And they, and if you remember that, you have to get, we were talking about, sorry, you have to get a proctor on the material in order to get your, your results. So if they were getting material from some different sources, I doubt they proctored all those sources to get the right stuff. So my guess is it was, if it was put in and compacted, it was just compacted till they felt like, yeah, it looks like it's compacted good enough. And then kind of left it at that if it was compacted. Now, the other thing I'll say, even with a contract and just being on the professional licensing side of it, knowing the liabilities that come with that, when an engineer stamps, whatever he stamps, a drawing, a letter, whatever, that's putting his professional liability on the line. So it's, it's, I mean, I would, I would hold a stamped document by the engineer over a contract because he's saying he's personally, he can be personally liable for that and professionally.
What do you make of this? And I couldn't find the letter for the fourteenth, I just have the, of the, of the, yeah, the eleventh. Anyway, he says, our professional services have been performed, our findings obtained and our recommendations prepared in accordance with generally accepted geotechnical engineering principles and practices. This warranty is in lieu of all other warranties either expressed or implied.
So generally that means whatever he's put there is, how would you say, outweighs, I don't know, that's the right word I'm looking for, supersedes any other warranties? What their recommendations are there?
But I just can't, I've never, I've worked with, I don't know how many civil engineers over the years and they always provide documentation. It's very, it's always, that's easy, that's the easy part of the whole job is, is that as far as like the testing and things like that, I've, I've done jobs where there isn't necessarily a sieve, or you know, a proctor done on how to build. It can be a roll test, it, there's, so I've seen variations in the testing and how that works, but always I've seen. So that's strange to me that we're not seeing, I wish we could see that. I don't doubt that, I mean, Nate knows what he's doing, no question about it. But I, I worry that there's no documentation or I wonder if he was able to see it all or. When you get different types of fill, sometimes it gets good and it's fine. Other times it just won't roll and it's a mess. And we have so many different types of soil in the city that's coming from around here.
Yeah, ironically, the stuff on West Lofer, stuff we're taking, so that we did on West Lofer did a blow count test. And because you take a rod, you stick it down and you hit it with a hammer and see how many blows it takes. Ironically, the stuff that's down lower that we can't get to is worse than the stuff up high. So we're kind of pulling out, redoing the good stuff, but.
Let me share with everybody, there's, Jody wrote an email on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. We found them dumping stuff over there again without any approval. And the contractor who's doing it is a company called Snake Creek Landscaping out of Midway. And they came into the office and Jody wrote this email to Corbett and to Craig and Ted when he was at Jones and DeMille and myself. And he says, Carol, meaning Carol Bell, she's a developer, is telling him that a grading permit has been pulled and to continue dumping dirt. This is when we told him to stop and not dump dirt anymore. And she says, he admitted that the dirt that is going in there has not been compacted, nor has it been tested. Said, I provided him a copy of Ted's letter to the city dated March nine, twenty-three, and he agreed to suspend hauling dirt onto the par property. So I think this was one of the, I think, one of the last times they were putting dirt on.
That would be that top eight feet that they did the test pits in.
So he says, I mean, admitted, I don't know how much he had to do with, with all of it, but at least the part that he was doing, working on or taking dirt there, that it wasn't being compacted or tested.
Yeah, and Bill Turner even admitted that on the site when we went out there on the site, that top eight feet, which is what that would have been. And he says, we didn't observe it going in, we didn't test it, that kind of stuff. And that's when they did the test pits, was in that top eight, yeah, came back and did the test pits.
Okay, any other questions for Ted? I want to go through some of these things just for the record and highlight some of the issues in them, just so that we've got it on, on record here. So you're welcome to say Ted or whatever your.
Yeah, any other questions?
So just to recap then, I'm just thinking of questions I want to have when we leave. So if they pull out three feet, it's still pumping, pull out those spots. I guess I just think that there's a chance if they went down five feet, we'd get pumping, fix a couple of spots. I mean, I just feel a lot better if it went down eight feet. Is that totally unfeasible? Do we have any?
The test pits were at ten or what, how deep did these new test pits go?
I think they were about eight or nine feet, kind of right down to that last, yeah.
I don't, it's, it's not necessarily, typically on those things, I've seen them dig a trench or something that you can get a little more, really see a little bit more of that.
Yeah, this one they did probably about four of them, we're talking, I don't know how long that road is, it's,
Four hundred and twenty feet.
It's not a long road, it's a pretty short piece, so.
It's just a little cul-de-sac, right?
Yeah, it's just a little cul-de-sac, it's not a very, very, not a long road. What's that?
It's the length of a football field.
About the length of a football field and they did like three or four, I mean, it's long there, which is pretty good. I mean, that's normally what we do in engineering practice, right? We would probably go out and dig about three test pits and something like this and then go back into the lab and start testing material and figure out what we got. And then if it looks like decent stuff, you know, it's, this is not an uncommon approach to doing something to this kind of stuff.
That's normally undisturbed though, right?
It can vary, for example, West Lofer, this is where we're doing, we're doing, it's the city's almost the same approach. Same thing, we're digging down, in this case four feet, putting in the fabric because the fabric kind of gives you that structural bridge between the existing and the new. It kind of acts as your additional fill, if you will. Structural will add like two or three more feet of fill and that's why we required the geotech fabric when they put this down because it's like putting down more structural, another two or three structural material. It adds to the cost of doing it. But that's kind of what we decided to do on West Lofer, just because in that case to dig down lower was going to get all the utilities buttered up. So this is pretty much the same thing that we're doing over on West Lofer.
West Lofer, did we, we grub it out before placing, there could be some trouble.
And that I don't know, that was done, you know, prior to my time. But that was done because they were putting the sewer across there and the sewer, to keep gravity fall, it's a big ravine, as you know, and had to go basically suspend across ravine. So they dumped all the fill material and to cover the sewer up, they did there.
What's your level of concern about significant?
Given that the length of the road and the number of test pits, I'm not overly worried about it. I mean, looking at the material that was in there, just going through his gradation reports that he submitted in his last test pits he did, the dirt's not that bad of material. It's probably kind of like what we've got in West Lofer. It's not a, it's not a, not a terrible material to start with. So it's, and that's why I said, I think if we just go down and, you know, prior to this, that was a huge concern we had when I was at Jones and DeMille. And the reason, the first time we wrote the letter, we said, you got to take it out, no more dumping, take it out. Because we don't know what's going in there. After doing the test pits and looking at the materials, not a bad material in those test pits, which covers, you know, like I said, a short road, forced. you know, like I said, a short road, four test pits, I mean, you get a pretty good representative sample, but, um, but the material itself's not bad. And it was only one test pit out of the three or four, whatever it was, that showed some minor material in it. No, and it didn't get compacted going in, we know that. The eight, but so this is where we said, go down the three and compact it, cause that's what we're doing on West Lofer and see what we get. Yeah. I mean, bottom line is, is once they start putting this structural material, if that stuff below, mother nature over time compacts material by itself. And that's how we get all this native, right? It's just mother, I mean, mother nature. I think we heard, I heard today that kind of the theory is after seven years, the material is now basically considered native. Cause it's just had enough time to compact itself. So, um, I mean, the short is they're not going to get a compaction on this unless the stuff down below is decent. And if they can't, then they have to keep digging till they can. It's kind of the short of the story.
Here's, I guess another concern I have. This was their last dump. And with, I mean, it's just, it's just big rocks. And I, if they're saying we're okay with this, what have they done before down below that may not have been discovered yet? With the, with the pits or, or, and again, we know this wasn't observed at all. And I mean, I.
Yeah, I think that stuff's coming out. That's part of that top three feet, right?
But if they're, if they, in their mind, if they, and this may not have anything to do with CMT, uh, cause they didn't observe this last eight feet. So someone else is just dumping stuff in there. And if that's what, if that's what Bellevue is accepting as fill, that concerns me. And we don't know, this is on top, and we don't know if any of this kind of stuff is, you know, at the eight foot level, seven foot level or whatever.
Yeah, and the test bits, it didn't show up down at those levels in the gradation reports. And the ones, the four they dug. That's what it looks like to me. That looks like they're making a, yeah. So it looks like to me is a track out pad, but I don't know. Um, for your SWIP program.
It could be, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the test bits didn't show that kind of stuff down there. So what they had in the test pits actually is, is would meet an ash toe like A4 material or something, something similar like that. Like I said, it wasn't too bad a stuff. And part of the reason why I came back after we wrote that first letter saying, take out basically all of it, all 20 feet. And came back after they did the test pits and had some discussions, well, let's go down to three anyway. And then we'll go from there and see what it looks like and then something worth. You get a compaction on it, then we'll put down the geotextile fabric, start building out a bit from there on their roadway section.
Three feet, take it out, do the test, put it back, compact it, that's still not great, right?
Road base and asphalt on top of that, yeah.
They're still below. Crazy to do a 10 year bond, is that even?
Our ordinance won't let it. Just one extension of a year for our ordinance.
These roads up here, you've seen, they're a challenge anyway, but we live on a moving alluvial fan. That's why I keep telling people and they say, why are roads always cracking? Well, this hillside's constantly moving, right? And so it's just a problematic area for roads to start with.
I guess, go ahead, Sam.
Okay, I get the feeling that you feel pretty comfortable with what you're suggesting that they need to do.
Yeah, I think with going down that three feet, um, leaving it, leaving the option there for us to go down three feet and then look at it and then require them to take more if needed. It helps me feel a little more comfortable with it. Now, you know, is there ever a hundred percent guarantee that, you know, there's not something down 19 feet that we don't know about that could cause a problem? You know, that, that could be the case in any road. Um, but, um, but I don't know. But, but at least going down the three feet and starting there and looking at it. And once you get, um, you know, three feet, two to three feet of, of good structural section in there, sub base, road base, and asphalt, you start to distribute your loads out, your traffic loads, right? Start to go get distributed out into the soil prism. And so it's not like you're point loading this stuff all the time. So you get a good structural section in there and the geotextile fabric, like I said, that, I think they say that's like adding another two feet of structural material or something like that, geotextiles.
The roll test is, is important.
The roll test is important. Yeah. Now, if they don't, if for some reason they didn't call us on a roll test, yeah, then I'd come back and I'd say, now you're taking everything out till we get back down to where we're comfortable again and we're going to roll test. Because that's, that's where you find these spots. Uh, like I said, the one we, when we did Bear Hollow, we found three spots. And they dug out those spots and brought in structural import material and compacted it back in. And we went and did another one, looked good. The one I did today up on South Lofer, did that whole road, they had one spot, they're going to dig it out, uh, well, they dug it out today and they're bringing in some structural material tomorrow. Backfill that spot and the rest looks pretty good.
They drive over the whole thing, so they'll go back and forth.
Mm-hmm. And I walk right along their vehicle with them. So this case, we had a loaded water truck and they drive real slow and I walk right by their tire and I just watch their tires. If any spots that starts to sink at all, then we mark it and say, that's, that spot's coming out. And we just do that back and forth.
Cover the road. Like, you know, use a dump truck loaded to fill with its tags up or something, a water truck.
Yeah, a water truck is pretty heavy. As soon as you had a soft spot, you know, right where it's going. Yeah. That one loader we did with the bucket, he loaded his bucket and it was, it was like a 980, pretty good sized loader. We loaded his bucket and man, as soon as you did a soft spot, you just watched that tire go. Yep. And they'd have to dig down until they, uh, were out of the bad material, so to speak. So they had to keep digging till they got out of the bad material and then they bring back in import material to refill it with, compact it in.
We're going to go down three, we're going to roll test it, whether we're satisfied that it's tight at that point, then geo fabric and then. Then they're going to retest the material they pull out. So I mean, at least do proctors on it so we can do our six.
Right, right. If, what, if they want to reuse the material they pull out, one, it has to first meet the gradations, or that soil spec for gradation. And then we run a proctor on it, um, and then they have to, uh, test, come, do compaction tests on it, putting it back in. And that's what we're doing on West Lofer right now. Um, they're running a proctor on it, uh, actually tomorrow. And then we're going to use that and we're going to do compaction tests on that material, go back in. If they can't, uh, get compaction on it, then they have to pull it out and put in a material we can get compaction on, for rebuilding. Yeah. And that's, I mean, they put in about a foot and then they compact it. By the time they get it compacted, it's six, eight inches, somewhere like that. You want to get about eight inches. I like, he may have said six, I don't know, maybe putting a six inch. Well, probably, yeah, probably six inch and then compact it and then get two lifts in, then do your, um, compaction test. Yeah. They might compact it every six, but we'll probably go about a foot before we, and that's what we're doing with so for about every foot, we're going to test it. Because you can't really get a good test at six inches, cause your pro's got to go down in the ground, it goes down about four inches. So by the time four or five inches, so by the time you get your pro down in there, if you're only six inches, you're about at the bottom of the, yeah. Yeah. So you gotta get about a foot in before you can test it. Yeah. Yeah.
Did they provide to you the, the pit tests, the, the information that they, they garnered from that, from digging the pits and kind of soil and so forth? Do you have all of that?
Uh-huh. That was in that letter Bill sent, um, when he sent that letter about, here's our recommendation. Cause he, they did the, um, they did those test pits and then they ran the gradation and civ analysis on that and then classified that soil. And then he wrote the letter saying, here's my recommendations, Bill did. And that's the letter they initially sent us and it had all the test results attached to it. And that's what I read and looked through, uh, that then I, where I replied back and said, yeah, okay. But instead, he was recommending two feet. I said, let's go down three because I saw some material two feet in one of the test pits and let's make sure we're getting below that stuff. And then he didn't recommend a roll test, but I recommended the roll test and then also required the geotech fabric, which he also didn't say. He basically said it's, it's pretty, he thought it was decent material and they could get recompacted in there, but as is. But I think with the roll test and the geotextile fabric, that's kind of smatted. But once again, it's, I mean, it's one of those things where it's a little bit, that's kind of what we're doing on other roads. But I mean, you know, it's up to, whatever you guys want to do to approve it.
I guess I, I'm looking at maybe a little bit larger picture with this, with this situation. Uh, in, in, in Bill Turner's letter of June 11, in his second paragraph, he told them what they needed to do, the kind of fill that they needed to put in there. And, um, there, I think there was a complete disregard of that. I don't know why. And this, another thing concerns me is they won't tell me. I've asked them for that information and they, they don't want to go back. And that's, that's up to them. But that leaves a question in my mind is here, here it was laid out and Ken Berg should be aware of that too. If he was brought into the picture, he's the engineer of record for the development. Bill Turner is, is like a, uh, advisor, what, advisor or another consultant in the process. He's the one that's got the, I think he's a structural.
No, he's a geotech.
Cause he's a geotech.
Yeah. So Ken Berg's a civil engineer that does development design. And then, uh, Bill Turner's a geotechnical specialist engineer. So he specializes in geotech and soils.
Told them the right thing to do, but they, they didn't do it. We've had, we had problems all along with them putting field dirt in there. And each time they were, that we found out about it, it was, oh, it's not us, we're not doing that. Someone else is dumping stuff there and we had no reason to discount that either. There's a lot of basements being built around the city and people looking for a place to put their dirt. They see a pile somewhere and they think, well, that's a, that's a freebie, we'll just take and dump it there. So that, that's what we started thinking was going on. And, um, we would alert them to that and then it would stop for a while. And then it would happen again. And so that's, that's looking at a wider picture that I've, that I've looked at that, that causes me concern. With the way that they have, the way that they have handled it. Back in June of 2019 again, they wrote this June 14th letter. And they said, to date, we estimate there's about three, three feet of fill that's been placed in there in 2019. This is from Bill, Bill Turner. So they had started back then doing, let me add two, which none of this was approved. It's not like they, they did it without us knowing about it or testing it. This wasn't approved. They did not have a final plat. So there should have been no work being done on this at all. Um, without a final plat having been approved. And so that's another thing that I look at, concerned, worry. Again, they refused to say why or fix responsibility for it. So I don't know who was directing this or who was saying, do it. And any of the correspondence we have is silent on that, that part of things. They shouldn't have been doing it. I've even thought of finding them, cause they went against our ordinance in doing what they did. But I don't know. It just, I guess it would just probably to make a point if anything, and I don't know if it's worth it to do that. So.
It sounds to me like, like that, when they say, we don't know who's doing it. And then you say, stop it, and then it stops for a while.
Yeah.
It must have some control.
And so there seems to be some connection there that they're not admitting to.
I agree. I agree. In fact, there's a sign that we found, I don't know if it was in your package that I sent to you. When I was over there taking pictures, I found this sign in the dirt. It had clean field dirt wanted. That was dumped there, it was, you know, on, on the property. So it, they may have been soliciting what they call clean field dirt. I, I don't know. I, so I, I can't say definitively that, that that's, that's who put it there. We've talked about.
So my thoughts on this, cause I've seen, I've seen that geotech fabric. I've built buildings in swamps, you wouldn't believe, just mushy, gooey dirt. And we've layered that fabric under the footings and things like that. And it stabilizes it in amazing ways. I think your recommendation would work. My worry is what you're talking about where we just don't know what's even there at all, even below. I mean, we just don't really know. That's my worry.
Yeah. You knew it was underneath.
But I knew it was there. We went right down to where we were in the, cause every time we built in that swamp, we were at least getting down to the hard pan or somewhere. Where, and the engineer would have done the test holes, he'd be there and say, you know what, that's the material we're looking for. Make that work. And then it was documented a whole way through and it was, the time we did it, it was very clear it was done right. I'm really confused that it was done right. Me, that just seems like it doesn't. It's kind of goofy.
Question mark for me is CMT being so willing to sign off when it's, how do they, I just wonder where their confidence is. If they could tell us, hey, this is why we're confident, then. I work with CMT a lot. They're never loosey goosey, they're staplers. I'd love to just hear more.
From them?
Yeah, from them. Like, this is why we're confident. This is why we'll sign off. This is why we're okay with it. And we will stamp all these reasons why. And who are we to argue?
If he can show us that, we have Nate come in and talk to us or whoever.
Yeah, I spent a little while on the phone with Nate and he gave me a good rundown of everything, but feel free to call him and.
It needs to go beyond verbal though. We need to have this.
Well, their warranty is no good unless you have some.
Yeah, and that's, that, well, like I said, it's, it's just.
If he's willing to stamp the plan and that's on it, then that's kind of what the same thing.
Well, in the letter, they stamp, I mean, when they stamp a letter in engineering world, that's your professional license. I mean, that's as, that's as same as stamping a, a plan or anything like that. You're putting your liability, your professional liability on the line, doing that kind of stuff. I know I'm pretty careful when I stamp stuff. And that's why when we get the new guy that gets his PE for the first time, we make him stamp everything. So, well, and just say, I'll kind of leave you this, I really got into wherever direction you guys go. Um, I was, I'm looking at just, I got no personal vendetta in this dog in this fight, so to speak. I'm just looking at solely from an engineering aspect to, you know, to, to get a good project. Uh, what I felt would be a decent approach to this without, without, how would I, how would I say, without, um, an approach that I think would get us a, a direction to go the right way. But like I said, it's up to you guys. I wasn't, like I said, I haven't been involved when they brought in that fill. Um, it's similar to what we're doing on our project, same approach. Um, but I'm just looking at solely from an engineering. I don't look at it from the ordinance like Wayne, and I know there's some issues there and, um, so.
I mean, it, it appears to me that, that the approach that you're recommending is trying to meet their halfway, so to speak.
Just trying to get us.
We want you to do this in order for us to really have what we feel like will be a solid sound load when it's completed.
Right. I mean, this is kind of a, a way, I mean, really the options are either you take out all the field and start over. Twenty, twenty feet of field and start over. I think that's going to lead to issues beyond just engineering. Or we find a way, um, their engineer came back with what he recommended, Bill, in his letter, they do. I looked through their test results, looked through his letter and went a little beyond that. With taking out a little more dirt, adding the geotext down, a few things like that, that I felt would be, and doing the roll test that I, I felt we'd be comfortable with. And, and have experience with here. Um, just looking at solely from, from kind of the engineering aspect of things, but. It is a way to kind of try and find, let's, let's figure out how to get this thing done and something we can be comfortable with in the end. As far as just the project aspect of it behind the engineering.
How much more comfortable would you feel if we went down ten feet to that twelve, to that twelve foot mark where they. They do have some documentation, be it observation and so forth of the field that was going in and. And ask them to take ten feet out and then do the same process.
And this is in eight feet.
I don't know that we would end up with, um, we could do that. I mean, those test pits they dug were down at eight feet and I looked at all those gradation reports. Um, of the material that came out of their older test results. The material's really not, that eight feet's not a bad material. Now, whether there's other things in it at some point, I mean, once again, we're just looking at the road right away, right? I mean, there's, if you go out there, there's, they, they feel well beyond what the road's going to be. We're just concerned about the road. Out of the test pits that they've dug, it's, it's really not a, not a bad material that's in there, so. I don't know, I, I think if you go down eight feet, I'd probably say. We could take out the geotextile fabric. I wouldn't be worried about geotextile fabric then. Putting the fabric in is a way to get the additional fill without having to go for additional fill. And that's why we ended up doing on a Westlofer, because we found out we couldn't go down, because Westlofer, we should go down about twelve feet on that road. But with the utilities at four feet, we, we can't without suspending all of our utilities. So the compromise was let's put that geotextile fabric in and, and build the section back on that, so. Once again, um, you know, I'm just looking at, I really got no. Came up with what I thought would be a good engineering approach to it, so the other side of it, I don't really get too involved with.
Makes sense to have a, like a weight limit on either of these roads.
So when they, when they design these road sections, so to speak, which is usually your subgrade road base. And asphalt and what the city requires will usually handle about a, they call it H twenty loading, which is a semi basically. And I don't think we'd get anything much, much bigger than that here, so. I mean, you could put a weight limit, I. I don't, I don't know that we're going to get, you know, the other thing is that road is going to get very little traffic on it. Because it's like four hundred feet, it's going to have like four or five homes. Very little traffic, so usually would affect your, your asphalt, your daily loads. That's what wears your asphalt more than anything. I mean, they call it your average daily traffic, ADT. Our roads up here, our ADTs are so low that, um, your asphalt sections really don't have to be. Deforest. It depends on. Subjective, I'll put it that way. That's very subjective.
I mean, I, I agree with you basically, oh, and the biggest load you're going to get on that little pole side. It's if you have to take a fire engine up there. That's probably the biggest thing you're going to have up and something like that.
And, and that occasionally is, is really not that big a deal. I mean, if you had like diesels driving over it every day, you know, then that becomes an issue. If you get occasional cars on it. I mean, that's not that much of a load and, and the Amazon driver and a fire truck once in a while, it's very small loading on that road.
I think for me, the only, I think everything makes sense, one thing when I brought it up to the person. We have decomposition down there. Down the road. That's probably our biggest risk.
What is core testing? What does that consist of?
That's usually when you have an existing road, you go out and you pull a core sample, which gives you your asphalt thickness, the base upgrade thickness. So you can tell what your structural, the structural section of a road is considered the, um, compacted subgrade. The road base and the asphalt, that's your structural section of a road, that's what builds all structure in your road. So when you do a course or through the road to figure out what that's like.
Is that all, is it usually a couple of feet most, at most?
Mm-hmm, yeah, maybe a couple of feet and it's usually done on existing roads. Because if it's a new road, you know what's going in. If it's an existing, you're.
I just wondered if some core tests could be done at some other places there besides where the, the pits were, were dug. But they wouldn't go down that far then.
Yeah, really, I mean, what they're doing test pits is your best approach there. Do what they've done. That's, that's probably the best method there, um, to test that dirt, figure out what's there.
Especially when it's not compact. If you do a core test, it's just going to fall apart if it's not compact.
Section of that road. Taking stuff like that. Test pit, it's usually what you do. Or unless you're going really down far for some sort of building or something.
Where were these test pits taken? Was it in the beginning, in the end, in the middle or across the width of it or how?
No, they did them, if I remember right, um, so the road goes four hundred feet down, they started at the kind of, they're the connection to the existing road and did. About four of them going down, just the length of the road, kind of this, and where the road will be.
For the length of it.
For the length of it, yeah.
Was it your opinion Ted that even if there is some decomposition down there, if we do the fabric, um, the mesh. And build upon that, that it's going to be okay?
I think with the loadings we get. On that road, fairly minor, um, with the geotextile fabric, if we go down three feet and we get all the soft spots, make sure we hit all those. And like I said, if we do see deleterious materials we're digging or stuff we're not comfortable with, we just tell them to keep digging, you know, until we get down to where we're comfortable with what they have. The idea to go three feet was get below what I could see in the test pits, because when they dug the test pits at about two feet, they hit some. Um, in one, one of the holes out of the, I think the four, they, in one of the holes they hit. Some tree branches, I think it was, is what it showed, right? And it may have just said deleterious material, I can't remember. So my, I thought, well, let's go down a, at least a foot below where they found that in the one test pit and see if we see anything else. If we do, we'll keep digging. If not, we'll see if we can get it rolled, pump tested and. See if it's a good material at that elevation. If it's not, then we keep going until we hit good material and if, if that means going down. Essentially, that's what they'll have to do, um, but I thought let's at least get three, start there and see what we've got.
Their test pits were only two feet?
They were eight. Two feet down and the feet, yeah, two feet down is where they found.
That's why we're removing the three feet.
Got a branch sticking out, he went down.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think they say it's actually.
I can't remember if it's, if it's smaller than your finger diameter or something like that, that's no big deal. But when you get into the bigger stuff, if we find that, then. Would I stamp it? I don't stamp anything anymore. That's why, that's why we hire, that's why, well, I, I, I work at the city now, I don't have stamp. I make, I make our consultants stamp stuff now. If the design was in front of me. Um, yeah, I probably would, I probably would. But the other thing is professional ability is covered by the firm, not by the person, so my company that's covering me. I mean, like I said, the reality is we're going down, uh, who knows how deep, at least three, could be deeper. Uh, putting in the geotextile fabric, which will give us a good structural section, then from there we build the road back up again. And our, our ADT on this road, our average daily traffic loading is, is really minimal. I think, my, my personal opinion, and I'm not really a road professional, water is more of my background. I think we're going to see more issues with that road just because we live on a Louisville fan than we will with the. With the, um, what's there. I mean, I think that road, yeah, all of our roads have issues up here because of that reason. That's why they're all pretty much crack seal now. Just because we live on a hillside, that's. Louisville fan, basically all the sediment that's washed off of these mountains has created this fan that we live on and that sediment just keeps moving. And that's why all our roads keep cracking and stuff like that. I, I think that's our bigger issue to deal with. So I think this road, bottom line, is probably going to see the same problems all our other roads, see. I mean, it's never going to be, you know, it's not going to be perfect forever. I think that's going to be as much of an issue to deal with as anything else, but. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we could make it do in concrete. That's what UDOT does, of course, those have their issues too, concrete roads. They run into lots of problems with those. But, you know, like I said, I'm just, uh. Kind of taking the engineering approach to it, the other. I, I don't have a lot of history on what they've done prior to this.
CMT or who's, who's the new structural or the new geotech engineer?
It's CMT's for them.
For the developer.
They're okay with your recommendation, they think that it's fair, they're not.
That's where it came from, correct Ted? They made a recommendation to you and you studied it and feel comfortable with it.
They made a recommendation to me, I went through it and then I added to their recommendation with more. The geotextile fabric is what I added, going down another foot, roof rolling it, all those were things that I added to what. Their recommendation was just to go down two feet and then rebuild it. And I added all the other stuff to it, my recommendation back to them, because that's kind of what we've done on Westlofer and. Some of those others and seems to be, seems to be working out okay, but. So it's up to you guys, that's why you guys get paid the big bucks. Yeah, all the plat stuff and all that, I was. Discounting all that when I was reviewing their information and putting together recommendations, I was just looking at solely as, as, as an engineering aspect.
Now, for us to keep in mind, city council is going to make the final decision on.
Right.
On this, you know, we'll let them know what our recommendation is and it may be fractured. I don't, I don't know, but that's okay, but city council will be the ones who make the final determination on. After similarly discussing it and getting Ted's input so far.
So Wayne, is, is this not one of those that does not have to go back to city council?
No.
Because we already approved it once?
No, they're amending it now, so it does. So. Any other questions that you've got or any other input or? Everybody's thoughts on it?
I would still love to know why they're okay with six feet of who knows what.
I feel. Confident. In Ted's amendment to what they have. I think that, that. Especially the geotech. Fabric and that's how I understand what we can do. I think that's a, I'm very.
I also. I hate the way they went about it. I think it's a terrible way to go about something. I also know problems that this guy's inherited. Since he's taken that position. And I also think that your recommendation of the two, your warranty and fabric and the roll test. I don't know how you get much better. So I'm, I'm pretty confident that it'll work. But I'm with you Wayne, I think they did, it was a lousy way to go about this.
They really put the project in jeopardy.
Well, it really did, it seems, it almost seems it's ridiculous that they would do that. Why would they do that? You know, but.
I, I think largely.
I think to make, to fix, I think the fix is good, but it doesn't fix the dumb way they did it.
Does it set a precedent down, does someone else do this to us, you know, while you let the bells get away with it?
I think these are issues we're hoping to fix going forward. Take care of stuff like this. So now we require if there's anything that goes on on their site that has to do with dirt, they have to get an excavation permit to start with. And that gives us a heads up on they're doing something. And so in this case, in most cases, I mean, it's, it's not like you can't put material on your property. You know, if it's your, if it's your property. You see it all the time, people stockpile dirt on their property, but if you're going to be doing any dirt moving or anything like that, you have to get an excavation permit. Trying to fix that.
Subdivision and it's kind of.
Yeah, and in this case, it was just a little different because it's a development, right? They're building a road on this one. Uh, whereas the, you know, the average person may be. And, and, you know, like I said, I, I don't know a lot of the history, I don't know if, if, you know. At what point they decided it was okay to start dumping dirt here and, and. My, my, my assumption, I don't know, is that they knew they were going to need a road in, so they just said, let's put, start putting dirt in and. See if we can do, get this dirt free, would be my guess, but.
Well Ted, if they, sorry, I can't hear you guys speaking very much, but if they had the foresight to bring in a geotechnical engineer for the first twelve feet. They knew they were doing something. Ju- just as, as a point of fact, they, they went above and beyond that. So I, I'd have to say that they definitely knew.
Well, and, and I will say, this is once again hearsay, so. In a court of law. Public Works Department in, in going through this, it was all verbal and hearsay, so I don't know the truth behind it. That there were discussions with, or when this all started. And so now we're trying to come up with a resolution to. At least get something, um, decent out of it.
There's a point to be made though, the public works department didn't have authority.
Yeah, I know.
Do that.
And maybe they should have.
If they did.
Yeah, yeah, maybe they should have, should have.
The developer may not have known that.
True, that's true.
They are, they're just like, well, the city guy said, do the thing and that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
So I think.
This isn't the only thing. That the Bell subdivision has done without authority. I mean, they have sold some of the lots before the plot was ever even approved.
There was a rumor to that effect.
Well, we know that there's rain and there was plot.
The rumor was sitting right there.
Well, yeah.
You know, so this is not the first thing that has been a little scheme off.
Well, we try to keep those things from happening where we can.
Our goal is to kind of try and get things a little bit, bit better in a process and manage a little bit better. I think the good old boy days are. Can't make those work too well anymore.
So tonight we're trying to approve your recommendation to send to the city council.
I think it's the amended final plat, prove the amended final plat, but, but like I said, it's up to you guys, I'm just giving it. Or modify it, yeah, or make.
Whatever, yeah.
Or go back with a, would that be approved with these modifications or whatever? Like I said, I'm just giving.
And again, the council are, they'll be the final decision makers on it.
So they, it's, if I am correctly understanding that they've already put. Those comments on the final plot.
They have, it's a draft.
We've probably used up your time Ted.
Test tomorrow, I put myself into messes. Got a test tomorrow. I put myself into messes.
Does anybody want to take a, make a motion? With whatever you.
I will move. That we send to the city council. The amended plot for phase B of the Bellevue subdivision. As recommended, as modified. On the city engineer. The fire chief. Whatever, whatever time it will be.
Building official, fire chief, city engineer.
I'll, I'll second that.
Hey. Any further discussion on it?
Can we go to CMT and ask them for something? Before we do that, I, I would love to have. That gap filled at least with a piece of paper and a stamp. Before I.
You can withhold, you can withhold a vote. Commissioners have done that. In the past and we can. I don't, I don't know if it'll make a difference, but we can certainly ask them. If, if they can provide additional information to us, but.
We have a motion on the floor that has been seconded and so we need to vote.
Make a vote on it. Yep. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, did you abstain or did you vote yes?
I voted yes.
Okay. Very well, we will. Forward that recommendation then to the council. And, and. Ted is. I know you got a full plate, but you're the one that, that's kind of got the. Interaction with. With them. Could you pursue Simon's? Uh, interest in seeing if they're willing to. What they're willing to provide to us.
Yeah, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Nate again and see. I mean, I think beyond the eight feet, is that what you're looking for? Because the eight feet, they've done the testing on and gave us the letter.
Just the eight, really it's that.
That top part of the plot, yeah.
I think we've got it documented. They're okay with the 12 feet.
Yeah, and the eight feet was the second letter that they did the testing in and then sent the letter with the recommendation based on what they saw on that eight feet.
So, so then it is.
Because they didn't observe that eight feet at all. It was the test pits.
This is their remedy.
Now, I can ask Nate if they've got anything on that initial 12 feet that they could provide us. So the eight feet, they didn't see go in at all, CMT. So that's why they did the test pits and then wrote the letter.
You're not going to get that stamp. What's wrong with the eight feet?
Other than the letter he sent us already. Yeah, uh, because he, they did the test on that eight feet. They did the test pits and tested it and then wrote that letter. I don't think we'll get any more out of that eight feet then because they didn't see it go in. They just went and did the test pits and he's saying, okay, based on what we see from the tests we've run on this dirt, here's what we recommend. And then we added to that recommendation. Now, the 12 feet is what we don't really have any documentation on, other than the first letter he wrote that says we observed it and we're good with it.
To me, at least, I mean, it's weird they don't have records, but that's something.
Yeah.
I mean, a, a truckload of dirt is relatively small. I mean, dump it, it's like, oh. All that work for that. And so how many trucks of load or loads of dirt are in there? It's a lot.
Yeah.
And a couple of little scoops. Really have no idea what's in there, so. Anyway, but it's a small road. Chances are, but if it starts settling a couple of feet down the road, three years down, we're on the hook, so.
Yeah.
Definitely get a knock. All right. Thanks, Ted.
Okay, thanks Ted.
I'd be willing to have Dr. Nate and have him just provide something too, if we can and see what he, they're the, they're the ones that are doing the proctor for us on West Lofer. Yeah, see what he would be.
Let's do it. Let's do it. I like, I like.
Just see if he's got anything he can give us on that or. Be willing to give us.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks Ted.
Thank you. Good luck tomorrow.
Go steady.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion of city code 10 dot 11 dot 8. It's the. All encompassing motors, so to speak, the fencing, the wall. The. The whole title. Landscape features fences, walls and driveways and culverts. Something came up this week. I was talking to Jody about it and. I kept, it had to do, there was some, seemed like there was a conflict in our fencing ordinance. And I can't put my finger on it. Tonight. What that was. Think about that. See. But we don't have a definition of walls. In our ordinance. What's a wall? It's come up with retaining walls. Is it a landscape feature? Is it a structural? Issue. Walls over four feet.
Require engineering.
Require engineering to, to come forth with them in their, part of their plans. So. Anyway, we don't address that. In our ordinance, we don't define it. And so. I'd like you to start thinking about it. Look our ordinance over. Walls and maybe come up with a, a definition. That. Would work there and I'll. Put my thinking cap back on and see what it was with the fencing. Conflict. As you're doing that. Look through the fencing thing and see if there's other things. That need to be. Reviewed more closely, maybe changed. Part of our fencing ordinance. It's kind of. Been. Thrown together over the years. And so. Maybe anyone will find the thing that I'm trying to think what it was. Anyway, do that and we'll put it on future discussion.
Oh, there, there were some things that. That I thought we needed to clean up. Especially. Because we had. A defined. For the upper part of what we. Something different than we had for the. Four Seasons area.
Yes.
And. He said. No. We should have vinyl.
Color, color of vinyl.
A vinyl coated chain link fence, but not. Just wire chain link. Except down in Four Seasons, we never said. Put it wire. Chain link. So that was one thing I thought we should clean up, but. I don't think that relates to what you were.
No.
Getting to, but I, there were some other things that I made some recommendations on sometime. Trying to clean up the language a little bit.
Okay, look, everybody look at that and those items there.
Do we have someone wanting to put in like block fence? I mean. Is that, is that what we don't have?
No, we can have.
We have a block fence.
Yeah.
They're down in the south.
On the upper part, we don't allow privacy fence. It has to be 75% open. Up on the top. Down in Four Seasons. They can have privacy fencing. But nothing can be higher than six feet. And if it's in the front yard, it can't be more than 42 inches. Or next to a roadway, it can't be more than 42 inches.
Yeah, it can't come forward.
Well, it could be in the front yard. It could be, it can't be more than 42 inches. In the front yard.
Can it come forward from the plane?
Yeah, as long as it's not.
Forty two?
Yeah, not more than 42 inches.
It may have been a privacy issue with.
I mean, if it's up, you know, in Summit or up here. Then there is no privacy fence allowed.
Up here, up here. And time for your committee. The reason we did that was because there's no trees down there. They don't have a way of shielding at all. Their, their yards and whatnot, so that's why we allowed. Privacy fences down there. We don't have them up here because people can use trees if they want to. Shield, shield things. But with privacy fences, there's an issue too, that it can't. Interfere with. With looking at oncoming traffic. There has to be enough clearance there that.
And that's one of the reasons why the 42 inch. And then as well.
Up here.
Yeah, so you can still see your 42 inch fence when you're coming up to an intersection. I call it clear.
Clear vision. Clear vision. Okay. General plan update.
I'm assuming you saw. The questionnaire.
I haven't seen it yet, but I know about it.
Okay.
And you can go online and I plan on doing that. They had a, at Woodland Hills Day, they had one of the individuals who was handing out business cards. With the information about going online and, and doing the survey on there. So. Each of us ought to. Ought to do that. I think it's a kind of a lengthy survey. Have you seen it? Severin?
Uh. Well, the last meeting.
We went over it.
We went over it, yeah, and we made. A bunch of suggestions on things that we needed to clean up. But I have not looked at it since then. I thought. I actually got an email from him saying that. Here it is. Take a look at it. That they were. They have the. Being there right.
Yeah.
That's all I know.
I didn't find across that. Can you send that to us with a link or something? Way to get to it, or is it, is there, how do we find that survey?
I, I can send you the email that I got.
Is it a link email?
I think it has a link in it to the survey itself. For, for those on the committee. But I can send that around.
Jody posted it on the city Facebook page as well. There's a QR code for that, for the survey.
Okay, good. Thanks, Brian. We've, uh, on three bridges. They came a couple, maybe a month ago, I guess, and met with. The city. Council and had a discussion with them. On six areas that. There's. Mutual interest. In. That they have identified and the city has pretty much. Agreed to that. And I think we talked about it. Last, last planning commission meeting that we had. The staff is. City staff. Which is, uh, Jody, Lori, Ted, myself. And Ben. Kind of represents the council. On that. We've talked to them. And kind of defined things a little bit more. And made some assignments to. Whether it's them or whether it's us to get some additional information. To kind of move these six areas forward. So there's a meeting, another meeting called with the staff. This coming a week from tonight. During the day to meet with them to review one another's assignment. They'll report. To the staff and the staff will report to them the things that we mutually agreed were. And, and this isn't to completely resolve. It was just some. Intermediary assignments that were made to different, two different groups to get more information, to bring together to help. Move those matters forward.
So what are the six areas? I'm assuming the mailboxes is one, the salt, salt, salt shed is one.
Is another one. Another one is, uh, the agreement or discussion of. Them giving a portion. A percentage of the hotel tax that they will be collecting. Out of their own profits. We won't, we were not entitled to those, but that's one of the things that they're considering. Giving to us because. They haven't been able to find any. Takers to put commercial in on the property that we own, which is the low property. Just below the, just to the north of the mailboxes. So that's under consideration. And.
That's an exchange, Wayne, that's an exchange for allowing a, a higher density zoning in that area. So that's going to be a big part of, of y'all.
Yep. You remember the other two earthy things, Brian?
We talked about water.
Uh, water.
Oh, that's right. Water. Was another issue. They, they said that they think that they've worked out the water. The main water issues they would have. Uh, that they were going to have. They worked those out with Salem. So they didn't share any, they weren't prepared to share any details with that, but it seems like, uh. That has partially been answered by them. Or for them by Salem.
Well, there goes our chance of annexing.
Well. Maybe. That, and that's not, that wasn't a topic that was brought up as a sixth topic, but. We've been concerned that they would take that lower property and annex it into Salem. There's been no further discussion about them doing that. So it's kind of. In the cloud. Right now.
And then it's not one of the six.
No, it's not.
And we don't remember what six.
Oh, didn't, they were, they were talking about stormwater.
Oh, that's right.
Oh.
Uh, accommodating our stormwater. With theirs, but it's something that they would address themselves and make their. System. The main problem is a water running down Woodland Hills Drive. And they would. In their development would construct. Uh, enough infrastructure to take care of our stormwater that would come down to their. To their property. And, and so. That's of concern to us. Right now, Jones and DeMeo is doing a stormwater study. That will further help define. The quantity of water that we've got to deal with. Coming off the, coming off the city here. So. And it seems like there's one other thing.
Well, if you're including the mailboxes and the roundabout, it's actually use of the roundabout would be the other one.
The two of them, I guess, yeah, maybe, maybe those are broken up. So they're, they're kind of a package deal, but, uh. They're potentially treated separately because the roundabout. The county is, they really haven't had a lot of discussions with the county. About the road issue and they, they still are interested in putting a road through the. Through our, our post office box property on the south side of it. And what that will do to our. Our P O boxes or mailboxes is it'll create, it'll. We'll have to do something with them. Where we move them, how we move them, how that road is configured. There was talk about making a sixth lane. Uh, or fifth lane coming off the roundabout so that there could be clear passage to. Three bridges without affecting if that mailbox gets moved further to the north. We're, we're close to being out of mailboxes now for the city. I think there's only 14 or so left. And the. Post office is holding on to those for vacant property that's under construction. Right now in the city that's not in. Uh, Four Seasons or Summit Creek. So. Uh, but something. So, uh, but something needs to be done way into the future because we've got all this farmland that is going to be eventually developed. And now there could be potentially one of the developers there would have their own mailboxes like, like we've got here on a piece of their property.
Isn't there somebody you do?
All that needs to be worked out, but a lot of things there with that.
And I think, as I remember from discussions long ago when, when Jeremy Searle was part of the planning commission, that the county had looked at limit to winter north for a four lane road.
I think that's still being considered, but I don't think it's reached a finality.
You made, you made the comment that Three Bridges had not talked to the county. And so it would seem to me that they better talk to the county if the county still has that projected for a four lane road.
Yeah. Three Bridges has talked to the county. There was some discrepancy of who, what person on the county they're talking to. And that's why I came back to us. They haven't talked, but they actually have, but they're different people. So, um, anyway, that, yeah. I mean, the county is, whatever that's going to be done, the county is aware that that's going to happen. And, but Three Bridges needs to be part of that discussion with them as they're planning on what to do with the roundabout and the road that goes, goes to Three Bridges. I don't know if you've all seen that dirt that's piled up north down there that's, they're buil, putting another pond in on the south end of their, um, development.
Maybe that's how they take the water.
So, well, they, they've got well water they need to, that could be irrigation water, I guess.
Where, where's the dirt?
It's nor, it's north of the salt, salt shed.
Oh.
It's on Three Bridges property, but as you go down Woodland Hills Drive, you can see off to the side, there's just, there's huge piles of dirt.
To the east side.
Yeah. Yep. So, anyway, that's Three Bridges update. Ryan, any, uh, any words of wisdom from you tonight?
No, uh, the only thing I would mention, and I don't know if it's really a big deal in the fencing ordinance. Um, so if, if you, if you go down to, to Four Seasons and on that west side of, of Summit Creek Drive, you've got the fences, the big giant brown fences that look like rock.
Yes.
So you, you list, it's listed in the ordinance vinyl. Well, that's not vinyl. That's actually, um, uh, polyethylene. Um, that's a super high quality. It's called a, a, uh, a premium composite fence. Um, so technically based on our, our ordinance, it isn't allowed in Woodland Hills. Um, but it's, it's beyond any vinyl that you could ever get. It's a super, it's a hundred mile an hour wind resistance, so on and so forth. So I don't know if you would want to change it to plastic slash composite fencing or something like that. Um, just, just as a thought to, to put in there. But I used to work for the company that built that, that makes that fence. It's right in Norum.
Well, I guess myself and others think it's vinyl.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely not vinyl.
Okay. We could maybe add, you know, vinyl or something similar or some other word. Would cover that.
Yeah, just, just a thought on that, just so we don't have anybody whining.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Nothing else? Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very well. Thanks, Brian, for your attendance.
Thank you, guys.
Give that to Jody tomorrow.